All right, I show is at six o'clock and we'd all please rise. Ducks and ants will lead us in prayer this evening.
Thank you, Lord, for the day you give it to us today. Thank you for this meeting and the opportunity to do the business of the city. We ask to be with our representatives and that you would give them wisdom and understanding in all things that is needed and to be with us in our main department.
My pleasure.
The allegiance to our flag, United States of America. Action under God indivisible.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the council meeting. At this time we will have roll call.
Deputy Mayor Darren Moore.
Present.
City Attorney Darren Rice.
Here.
Alderman Dewey Eccleberry.
Here.
Alderman Cody Adderbury.
Here.
Alderman Clifford Reaver.
Yep.
Alderman Tyler Lampley.
Here.
Alderman Eugene McGill.
Present.
Alderman Jerry Lizzenby.
Here.
Alderman Terry Stahl.
Here.
We have a term so we will continue on with the approval of amendments from the last meeting. You receive those in your packets. Is there any corrections to the minutes? If there are none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as they are?
Now, the motion by Alderman Stahl, seconded by Alderman McGill, to approve the minutes of the October twenty fifth meeting. Roll call vote Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill.
Yeah.
Reaver.
Yeah.
Stahl.
Yes.
Adderbury.
Yes.
That is unanimous. The minutes are approved. Next would be the approval of the bills that were submitted for this pay period. Again, you had a chance to look at those in the packets. Are there any questions on any of the bills? If there are none, is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Eccleberry, seconded by Reaver, to approve paying the bills for this meeting. Roll call vote Lampley.
Yeah.
Lizzenby.
Yeah.
McGill.
Yeah.
Reaver.
Yeah.
Stahl.
Yes.
Adderbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
And those bills submitted have been approved. The next section would be the public comments of the meeting. If there's anybody that would like to address the council, we will ask that you raise your hand. We will call you. We'll come up front. You will state your name and your address and you will have three minutes to address the council. At this time, okay ma'am, if you will step up here to the front, state your name.
Yeah, I'm John Herson, the street minister of the Dawid Christ. And I live on eight oh four West Water Street. And I'm here to announce, I've been stepping in here for my brother because he can't get here. People are still harassing me, Joe Herson. And they're cutting his electricity so his food will burn. And he said if he catches him, he's gonna hurt him real bad and then the police are gonna do something about it. But they're too late to do that. But he said that the other mayor was gonna do something, but everybody stretched him out and the man had a heart attack. And I'm, the reason I'm here is because I'm being attacked by people. And when I'm in the store, I'm in touch with people and I do it real quiet and I lay hands on people because I'm being used by the body of Christ. And the Lord, I mean, wherever I go, I help people, but I couldn't pull them in my house because I was put through a horrible storm last night, last year, and God stepped on the enemy and broke the jaws of Satan and Judge Maul, he, he is a very humble person and everything was released and God appeared before me and he set me free. He didn't allow any bad things to happen to me and I'm still here and I'm for the people and I'm not against nobody. I'm a very strong prayer worshipper. And I pray that, that God will use God's people here and things will get better for all of us and that we should, they have more protection instead of things coming against one another. And I'm being attacked by people that, that they don't even know me. And you know, I try to treat everybody equal because that's what God wants me to do. I died and went to heaven and come back and I, and it's horrible being a Christian. You're modern for who you are. And I pray that God blesses this nation and that our town is very blessed because we don't have all the terrible storms and things are happening to people. And that's all I got. May God bless you.
Thank you. Sir.
Ma'am.
Sure. State your name, your address.
My name is Rich Tull. I'm at one oh nine West Sibley. And I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight. I'm a maker. I'm a site on Etsy. It's your time and place. Your time and place on Etsy. I make crafts and stuff. I also do shirts and graphic design. And I'd like to thank you for this free advertising. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's gonna be on Facebook, right?
Right, and YouTube.
Oh, I forgot.
Please read Carol Sanders. All right. Would anybody else like to address the council? Seeing nobody, I will close the public comment sections of the meeting and we will move into routine business. The first item on the agenda is the repeal of an ordinance changing the setback requirement. And basically what happened there, a few meetings back, we got to talking about fencing setbacks. And you know, we chose at that time to do a setback change for the fence from seven feet to two feet. Unfortunately, I say that I miscommunicated with the attorney and you know, we changed the entire setback from properties, including buildings and whatnot. So after that was discovered, you know, I asked Attorney Rice to draw up a ordinance to repeal this. And then we will talk about passing in new ordinance with a proper setback for fencing at the next item. Any questions on the repeal of the ordinance? If there are no questions on the repeal, is there a motion to approve the repeal of the ordinance?
Take that motion.
I'll think of that.
I have a motion by Alderman Reaver, seconded by Alderman Eccleberry, to approve the ordinance changing the setback requirements and repealing the previous ordinance. Roll call vote Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill.
Yeah.
Reaver.
Yeah.
Stahl.
Yes.
Adderbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
And that is repealed. And again, I apologize for that. Item number two is ordinance regulating the construction placement and the maintenance of fence. Again, you know, we've had, you know, we've had a long discussion. You know, what was the proper setback for fencing? It was originally seven feet, which meant there was a total of fourteen feet between the property owners. And the council at that time felt that two feet should be enough that the persons or persons could maintain their fence, could mow it, could repair it. And you know, and that's basically, you know, what this ordinance is going to adopt is a two-foot setback on fencing and this is built with fencing only. Anything else, Attorney Rice?
Put it on the property line. Yes, yeah, we've got, and one of the issues we wanted to make sure was that the ordinance provided that, you know, it was so desired between the neighbors they could make like basically a division fence, a property line fence, so it kind of separates the two properties. And it kind of specifies about, you know, how that's to be handled and if they have an agreement and so forth, so.
Yeah, and I think that's on page two in section seven. Again, that just, that just allows if the, if the parties are agreeable, that the fence could be put on the property line, but both parties have to be agreeable. And that responsibility falls on the parties. It does not fall on the city to make any type of agreement or, you know, going forward with that.
Is there any documentation both parties agree to that will be? Yes, if they have a fence agreement, they would need to provide that to the building and zoning officer at the time that they apply for the permit.
Are there any other questions on the, on the, on this ordinance that will establish a two-foot setback for fencing? And if parties are agreeable, they can be placed on the property line with written agreement.
I have a problem if there's no other question either. I'll make the motion. I'll think of that.
I have a motion by Alderman Lampley, seconded by Alderman Eccleberry, to approve the ordinance regulating the construction, placement, and maintenance of fences. Roll call vote McGill.
Yeah.
Reaver.
Yeah.
Stahl.
Yes.
Adderbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
And that motion is approved. Item number three on this evening's agenda is that ordinance allowing the sale of personal property. Again, I would take the responsibility for this. If you remember last council meeting, identified two pieces of property that, you know, rather than put it out for a bid and spend the funds advertising and whatnot, you know, I asked that we just junk the material, junk the two pieces. That was a pickup truck that was from the water filtration and a mower. And you agreed upon that. But shortly thereafter, I had several, a few employees that asked, you know, that they could be willing to pay above what junk price was. You know, in, in avoiding having to put it out for a bid. You know, I asked Attorney Rice to draw up an ordinance that would allow us to sell to city employees those two pieces of property. We have received bids on those, on that equipment. But before we can open the bids and award the sale of those bids, we need the ordinance in place to allow us to do that. Any discussion?
I think it's fair. I mean, we were gonna junk something and we didn't get more and allow our employees to have to use it and know the equipment, but they wasn't willing to pay the word to keep it. I think it's a good thing.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion. I'll think of that.
I have a motion by Alderman Lampley, seconded by Alderman Stahl, to approve the ordinance providing for the sale of municipal personal property to municipal employees. Roll call vote Reaver.
Yeah.
Stahl.
Yes.
Adderbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
And that ordinance is passed. Item number four. At this time, we'll go ahead and open the bids that we have and.
Before I came out, I already did this.
That's okay.
We had the truck. I received one bid on that for two thousand and two Ford F-150. And that was submitted by Brad Young in the amount of four hundred dollars. That was the only bid for that, so now we go to Brad. And I did receive two for the mower, which was an X-Mark mower. Cole Young submitted a bid in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And Richard Perkins submitted a bid in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars. So Richard Perkins didn't stop.
So the pickup truck, the bid price was?
Was four hundred.
Four hundred and the X-Mark lawnmower, the price was? Four fifty-one. Is there no objections? I would ask for a motion to approve the sale of those, of those equipments to those high bidders. I'll make that motion.
Was that included in that order?
Yeah, I have it, yeah.
That was already?
Oh. No, I've left it blank. I saw this going.
So we need a vote for that?
Yes, yes, please.
To make a motion? Second. Okay, a motion by Eccleberry, seconded by McGill, to approve the sale of the X-Mark mower and the two thousand and two Ford F-150 truck. Roll call vote Reaver.
Yeah.
Stahl.
Yes.
Adderbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill.
And that sale was approved. Next on the agenda would be the ordinance permitting, permitting portable cargo container use. Last meeting, we spent some extensive time discussing that and come up with some different ideas. But Attorney Rice went back and put into the ordinance. We did forward that to you guys a little bit ahead of, of our meeting to make sure that it was the way that we wanted it. Is there any discussion? If none?
I believe everything was covered that we talked about.
I agree.
Yeah, I did a very good job on it.
Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion by Alderman Lizzenby, seconded by Alderman Eccleberry, to approve the ordinance permitting portable cargo container use. Roll call vote Stahl.
Yes.
Adderbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill.
No.
Reaver.
Yeah.
And that motion passes. Item number five is an ordinance to increase the building and construction permit fees. This is something that we've talked about that's actually needed to be increased for many, many years. You know, our current fee is ten dollars. You know, and that's, you know, we're not looking to increase those fees to prohibit anybody from building a fence or a building or, or anything like that. But you know, I think it's time that we increase those fees. The key structures, and I'll run through them real quick. The proposal is the addition of a storage building. The permit fee would be fifty dollars. Fences would be fifty dollars. Roofs would be fifty dollars. Decks and patios were fifty dollars. Pools are fifty dollars. Mobile home placement swaps or new constructions is one hundred dollars. Attached garages, one hundred dollars. New construction of residents, that is increased to two hundred dollars. And portable cargo container fee is one hundred dollars. There is a section two about commercials. New construction is recommended to be two dollars per one thousand for the first hundred thousands of the cost. Three dollars per one thousand for the remainder of the cost. Signs, up to fifty square feet is fifty dollars. Over fifty square feet is fifty dollars plus a forty-sit per square foot over the fifty. And portable cargo containers for businesses also at a hundred dollars. You know, some people might say that that's a large increase on some of the fees, you know, going from ten dollars to, you know, to two hundred or whatnot, but you know, folks, we were way behind on adjusting those costs. Again, I don't think it's the desire of this council that we prohibit anybody from installing a fence, a pool, a new business, you know. McDonald's, you know, I use McDonald's. McDonald's built a brand new building over there and their cost was ten dollars. They had just built one over in the St. Louis area and it was quite a bit larger than ten dollars. They were extremely happy. It's time that we increase that a little bit. Discussion from the council?
We looked at this, I remember a few years ago, flow started a quadrants before July. We, I mean, even these numbers will still be low comparatively to communities. So I think, I mean, it's a good place for us to move to. I mean, we may, we evaluate it in a couple or a few years, but I don't think any of that's out of line. It's actually fairly low compared to surrounding communities, but it's moving in the right direction. We've got a lot of fees that come along. Doug has spent his time propelling buildings and putting things up and we're not, we couldn't be many of that with ten dollars.
Any other discussion? If none, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion. Second.
I have a motion by Alderman Lampley, seconded by Alderman Reaver, to approve the ordinance to increase the building and construction permit fees. Roll call vote Adderbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yeah.
Any discussions on the purchase of this trailer?
I talked to the owner and his big reason for needing this, this trailer is the current one he has is a full tilt trailer. And so every time he gets on and off the trailer, he has to take his tools pretty much completely off because they all go to fly. This one that he's looking at here, it's a, it tilts and has a tool area that doesn't tilt. So it's actually designed for what he has here. And he believes he, he's talked to a few people and he thinks he can get a good amount out of this old trailer. It's really, I think by the end of it, we won't really be spending too much money to give him this new trailer and the one that actually is designed for what he's using.
Any other discussion?
Have a quick, a local purpose, right?
Yes, sir. If there are no other discussions, is there a motion to approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-two coffin trailer to the gas department?
I'll make that motion.
Stahl, I do second. Motion by Alderman Stahl, seconded by Alderman McGill, approving the purchase of a utility vehicle, a utility trailer for the gas department. And let's see. Okay, roll call vote Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill.
Yeah.
Reaver.
Yeah.
Stahl.
Yes.
Adderbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
And that purchase is approved. The last item in routine business of this evening's meeting is the sale of a ditch which, which trencher and a trailer. Again, that is from the gas department. He has currently, he has a walk behind trencher that they, they use for when they're trenching the gas lines. So he does not feel that he needs this ditch, which trencher and the trailer that they haul it on. So his recommendation, or my recommendation is that we put it up for bid. And I, I would like to ask that we ask for a minimum bid of five thousand dollars.
Just a package deal or something.
I, I know that package deal. And I, that's up, that's up to you. That's the what he thought he could, in talking with other people in town, if that's what the proper price would be. Now, that, that's, you know, Alderman Eccleberry asked if that was a package price. I mean, we can, if the council wants to break that open to, we'll sell the trencher and the trailer center. But you know, I'd go ahead and just, it would be my recommendation to sell it as a package.
I think a package is good.
Okay.
We, we, you have a right to reject it.
Yeah, we can, we, yes, yes. And would we like that at the next council meeting to have a bid back or do we want to let it run a little bit? Maybe make it the first meeting of December?
Holidays.
Yeah, with the holidays, you've got Thanksgiving coming up, so it doesn't, you know, it might be best that we ask that all bids be ready to go for the first council meeting in December. Is there a motion?
You make that motion. I'll second that.
I have a motion by Alderman Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman Lampley, approving the sale of the trencher and trailer from the gas department. Roll call vote Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill.
Yeah.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Adderbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
And that motion is approved. That will conclude the routine business. We will move on and being this the last of the first meeting of the month, the financial reports have been distributed. Anybody in the audience or anybody listening, would like a copy, you know, feel free to contact Diane at the of KLA at the city hall, and I'll get that, that to you. October expenses for the city were one million four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. October revenue was one million eight hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars for October net income of a positive three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine eighty-five, ninety-seven. Take a look at the finances for the year-to-date. Year-to-date expenses for the city are nine million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-four. Total revenues are nine million, nine hundred thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four. Year-to-date net income is a positive hundred and eighty-five thousand, dollars, fifty cents. Our cash flow for the month of October was a positive fifty-five thousand, two seventy, two twenty-seven. The balance and, and the general fund was two million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and penny. Payroll for October for the city was three hundred and thirty thousand. For the year date is two million, two hundred and thirty-eight, four seventy-five. And again, I've been asked for gaming revenue. Gaming revenue for October was twelve thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. Year-to-date gaming revenue is sixty-seven thousand, eight twenty-eight. Sales tax income for the month of October was a hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. And year-to-date, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one, two hundred and thirteen dollars. Again, cities, cities in the, in the black, you know, so far, and hopefully Mother Nature cooperates with us and our gas department moves a little natural gas and, and continues to push forward in the positive territory. Any questions on the financials? If not, we'll move into the miscellaneous section. As far as miscellaneous, first thing I would like to is to applaud the recreation committee in living for the outstanding job that they put forward with the Halloween trick-or-tchrunk or treat. It was a huge success. You know, I think you all deserve a round of applause. Thank you. One of the, the other thing that, you know, I might say is, is the city of Fairfield, we sell water to, to the Jasper Water District. And Jasper Water District has extended their lineup to Mount Erie. And we've, at that point in Mount Erie, they're having some issues with the chlorine levels and they're under a current boil order. You know, so, you know, they've been working hard flushing their hydrants, trying to get the chlorine level to pass the EPA standards. But they, they have now decided that they are going to have to put in a chlorination system to boost the chlorine up to there. Keith Bowman with the Jasper Water Works has approached me and we have some property by a water tower out there where they would like permission to set a Keith Bowman with the Jasper Water Works has approached me and we have some property by a water tower out there where they would like permission to set a building by their chlorinator to store the chlorine in. You know, I personally don't see anything with this set. And if there's no objections, I will ask Attorney Rice to draft just an intergovernmental agreement, so to say, between us that would just allow them to put that building there for their use. Are there any objections or questions from the council on that?
Would it be easier to sell the property or do you need the whole one?
Well, I would say if it's there, I'd say we just hang on to it. I mean, they're just, they're just gonna put, it's just a storage build. They're all insulated, I don't know if they're gonna put any, they might put some kind of heat in it to, um, to keep chlorine from freezing.
Yeah, that's fine, I have no problem with that. It's gonna save us because they're flushing constantly.
Yeah, yeah, they're flushing, they're flushing three or four hours a night, which is causing us some problems out of our water filtration. The only other thing under the miscellaneous, and then I'll turn it over to the council. Several months back, you know, we made the proposal to sell the power plant. We had a successful bidder. But through, through times, you know, there's, we've had some obstacles that have arisen. We tried to communicate with the potential buyer and he was, he was given a deadline, it was November the seventh, to consummate the agreement. It failed. So I, I think I would instruct Attorney Rice to back out of that agreement. Do you have anything else to add?
No, I had Flo try to call the, the bidder and sent a letter basically saying, hey, we don't, haven't had the real estate contract signed yet. So I really need to have that by November seven or we'll consider that to be, you know, off the table. So that's kind of where, where we're at.
And unfortunately, this is, you know, that was the second time that we thought we had it sold. You know, so we will have to do a little bit of brainstorming and see what we can and what we can't do, what happens with that. That is all I have for miscellaneous. Alderman, does anybody have any miscellaneous comments?
Yes, thanks for the great, great, Al, it worked.
I handled that, handled that for the council and before the meeting, something to kind of look at with tip. Here before the end of the year, we will need to put on the agenda to talk about the disbursement of the taxing money. Discussion on that. This is gonna be coming, so I'm just kind of giving everybody a heads up. Doug, Attorney Duss, shows how much money they are projected to receive. We've already got our first payments from the county and to our tip fund. We'll be awaiting the second one, so we won't disperse any money until we get full house and the money if it is approved by council. Second thing, very soon we will have the, our tax levy for the year. It will be coming very soon. We'll leave either, the council will have the choice to either vote true. The committee will put together a recommendation, the council will develop a first recommendation or keep it the same or whatever it should be. But I just kind of want to give everybody a heads up that it is coming, it is that kind of the year, it's nothing that anybody wants to discuss, but it's fair enough.
And, you know, and I'd just like to add to those comments. I mean, you, you take a look, I mean, nobody wants the taxes being increased, but, you know, taxes is one of the main funding revenues for the city. Take a look at, you know, some of our financial mishaps that we, you know, we've inherited from many years back. You know, our, our police pension is, you know, several million dollars behind.
About seven.
And, and our, our fire pension is behind, you know. You know, and like I say, I mean, nobody up there wants to have to pay property taxes, but, you know, the city is funded by, by, by taxes. And, you know, for several, you know, utilities and, you know, if you look at the financial report, you know, we have a lot of expenses, you know, a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to the black right now. But that, you know, where it touches, just those three pensions, you know, to bring us into compliance.
And we are, we are on a ticking clock. It's a long time out, and if you look at that, like, in what, ten-plus years, we have to be fully funded. We have to cover that ten million dollar spread. And we don't really know how we're gonna do it. The last three years, we have done small increases to under five percent. Because of just the city portion of the property taxes to raise it up, we got fire where it wasn't added to the debt. Police is still currently adding to the debt. We are not. Every year we add to the police's pension debt. That seven million dollars is still going on the police side. So it is something we have to look at, we have to figure out how we're going to at least stop the bleeding and then we can figure out how to treat out the rest of it to sort of reduce it down. Yes, sir.
You said the police is still adding, but the fire is not. What else have, I mean, what is?
Fire is a lot, fire has a lot less importance, yeah.
Okay, well.
So, so the first year we put, when we did a fire tax increase of four point nine five percent, we put most of that to the fire because we knew we could, kind of a Dave Ramsey kind of, you stop the one and then, then we focused off the next year and the next year more, mostly on police, but keeping the same level going to the fire. But police has so many more employees that it's multiplied that many times. Fire is around three million dollars behind. The total pension debt that we have is around ten million, I think, but not exactly sure of the exact numbers, it could be nine, it could be eleven, which is around the ten million dollars.
And by how far out do you say that went?
I'm wondering, is it twenty, thirty-something? We have to be fully.
Fully funded, you know, and part of the pension program is, you know, is, you know, that pension is looking to be absorbed. I'd say it doesn't matter in the next pension phase. God knows what could happen. And, and, and I, and I'd just like to, you know, take a moment here to say that Alderman Lampley or myself are, are not asking the media or anybody watching, but, you know, we're sounding the alarm and you've got an outrageous tax heavy coming. We're just putting it out there, you know, to be transparent, you know, I've tried to be transparent since I've been here. And I'll ask or answer any question that I can, you know, we're not, we're not sounding the alarm telling you that we're gonna have double-digit taxes or anything. We're just putting it out there, folks, this is where we're at and this is what we're facing.
Yeah, I mean, and we're looking at all the options. Mike, when he was there, we had a company, you know, it didn't really work out. But we're looking at all the options to try to find out other ways to maybe bondage or whatever we can do to get our cell, the police set up at the state, so they don't come in and say, we're taking all of your sales tax, all of your gas tax and everything. Because that is what the threat is out there right now. We will take every dime of your money that's coming into your city, we'll just hold it until you're caught up. And that would still be years. And we can't operate without getting any of our sales tax money and things like that. So there is options, but we have to stop the bleeding before you can even look at those. Because when we met with the guy, he said, well, as long as you're still adding to the debt, bonding it isn't gonna help because you're paying, you're gonna have to do payment. Plus you have to still meet that threshold of the extra money. And we couldn't come up with numbers at that time, but we're still, I mean, you know, I want everybody to kind of brainstorm on different things. You know, I mean, yeah, talk about different things, but we'll find a way to do it, it's, there's options out there. We just, I just want to keep everybody in the loop on what, where we're at. And we have to talk about property taxes.
Anybody else have any miscellaneous comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Appreciate everybody coming. Anything we can do for you, let us know.